Okay, we're going to need to order and we have a election chair and vice chair for the planning board and board adjustments. Mr. Max.
So every January usually since we, well, or the first meeting of the year, we would elect a new chair and a new vice chair. Anybody on the board can run, they just have a simple majority vote. Mr. Cole, if you want to run again, anybody. I guess we'll do that, we'll do it like this, we'll do it more formal. Anybody want to run for chair again or? Please your hand. Okay, so is any, I guess it's a unanimous vote then, he's the only one running. Okay, so Mr. Cole will be the chair again, and then for vice chair, Ryan A. Walt was the previous vice chair, but he has stepped off the board, so we do need anyone who's willing to run for vice chair in case Mr. Cole is absent at a meeting, he'll be the chair.
I'll do it.
Anybody want to run for else?
I was gonna nominate my cousins. I don't get to pick my running mate.
It's a, it's a majority vote, so I guess you get to vote.
I don't care.
So.
I'll be third line, I don't care.
Alright, so we have two nominations, so if it's okay with you, Mr. Cole, I'm gonna go left to right, and we'll just vote. And do you want to vote for yourself or Jackie?
Uh. Uh oh. Uh, I will, I will cede seniority here and, and vote for my fellow planning board member.
Hello?
I'll vote for Mike.
Okay.
Vote for myself.
I'll vote for. I'll vote for Mike. And for the young lady.
Okay, so I guess it's Jack. Okay. First, Jack, congratulations. Alright, so that's all the way, and so now you can continue with the agenda.
Number two, agenda approval.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, approval of the minutes for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Number four. Number four, CZ twenty-four point ten point zero two, A twenty twenty four, uh, thirty twenty-five Gribble Road requested zoning change from IND to CZ dash one nine, one I N, not D. To allow automobile dealers to use in addition to the current industrial and automobile repair service major use.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Cole, so I'm gonna go ahead and. Okay, so this is CZ, like you said, CZ twenty-four twelve, uh, zero one, actually, this is the second case, I apologize, let me pull up the. They're very similar.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, so tonight, there's two Gribble Road rezoning, conditional zoning cases. Um, so they're on the same road, they're very similar. The first case is CZ twenty-four ten zero two at three zero two five Gribble Road. They're seeking to, in addition to automobile repair major, they're seeking to do automobile repair, automobile sales. That's their main reason for the conditional zoning tonight. We believe the applicant's here tonight, but the applicant is Daniel Baharoff, and here's an aerial, I'm gonna zoom in on the aerial as well, it's across the street from Buried Plastics behind East Coast Trucking. It's the first parcel which you pull into Gribbles to land. Um, there's, uh, he has approval for automobile repair. He has since done site plan review and changed the use, um, so the aerial, uh, is, he's using it for automobile repair, but it used to be a house. Yeah, and he has approval to change that to automobile repair. So tonight, he's requesting automobile sales. It's point zero, zero point eight one acres in size. Um, the future lanes for this property is industrial center. The vehicle repair and vehicle sale are not listed in industrial center, but vehicle repair and sales are actually not listed in any future lane use category. So it's a little bit vague tonight on the, um, recommendation from the future lane use plan. But staff does realize that the proposed use doesn't align with Gribble Road. There's currently automobile sales in the industrial zoning for Indian Trail on Gribble Road, which is across the street from this property, further down Gribble Road. Um, and I did put together a list of conditions for the site, in addition, the applicant's also seeking to waive the sidewalk requirement on the front. So before I get into the list of conditions, I did want to share the site plan with you. Um, let's zoom in, but it's also located right in front of you as well, so you guys can see. Um, to summarize this, he is requesting three new buildings on site with parking, and he's providing a new fence out front with land, a five-foot landscaping and five-foot landscaping on the side adjacent to the residential home. But the residential home's also zoned industrial, so he doesn't, he's not required to put landscaping or a buffer. So this is the conditional zoning plan, so I've attached a few conditions on this site plan. Then I'll go over, and just let me know if you have any specific questions. So I request, he's also agreed to all these requests that the vehicle display limit is five vehi, up to five vehicles, and the rest of the vehicles that are on sale must be hidden in the back and not have any signage. Additionally, he has to keep all screening maintained and shown on the plan, and any modifications must be reviewed by the town. He has to be in compliance with this concept plan that he submitted that I just showed you, and has to comply with the concept plan within two years, so that has to be fully built, or he would have to revert back to industrial zoning and come back for conditional zoning approval. Um, he has outdoor storage restrictions, so all storage will have to be screened from the street, and then he has to comply with all permits for, uh, Stallings, Union County, and the state. Staff does recommend approval of this, since it does align with the other properties on Gribble Road, like in Indian Trail. And, do you have any questions?
The, uh, you mentioned in Indian Trail, the property that allows that, was that done under a conditional zoning in Indian Trail, or is it allowed within the general zoning?
It's allowed within the general zoning. Additionally, a lot of these properties were, um, have been there for multiple years. So prior to even our new ordinance from twenty eighteen, which isn't new anymore, I guess.
Did staff consider it inappropriate to do a text amendment on the general zoning to allow this in lieu of the conditional zoning?
Yes, uh, it would affect all industrial properties. If I zoom out from the map, everything in purple would be affected, including, um, Union West Business Park would allow automobile sales. We've also, uh, changed the zoning adjacent to Town Hall, the Town Center. These automobile repair places right here next to Town Hall, and we are slowly transitioning from Stallings Road for automobile uses to Gribble, more so on Gribble Road. It makes a little more sense than the main thoroughfare Stallings Road, so this is just a continuation of that.
Is there any issues with any type of water contamination connected to the adjacent residential properties from this, at this point?
I'm not aware of any water contamination.
Potential or?
Potential. I haven't researched water contamination, but, um, the properties are zoned industrial.
Right.
And there are a slew of industrial uses that are about to, that are approved by Ryan, that are about to pop up on this industrial area, and they have stormwater, and I don't know about water control or water quality, but they do have stormwater control measures in place.
So you mentioned that, like, if the automotive's kind of moving toward Gribble Road, would each instance of this have to come with another conditional zoning request? Or would staff look at a potential change that would make this easier for that to happen?
So, um, we actually are looking possibly to amend the vehicle service and repair district to allow automobile sales and rezone all of Gribble Road. We just haven't done so yet because we have, these are our fir, this is our first two conditional zonings for automobile sales in the area, and we didn't want to prematurely, uh, rezone the whole area, but we, we are looking into rezoning specific areas to allow, um, uses like this or other uses in areas, um, like you've said, to make better use of those zoning categories.
And you said that the applicant would be foregoing sidewalk on the property?
Correct.
How does that fit in with the structure or the character of that area now?
Yeah, so as far as I'm aware, in Gribble World, there's no sidewalks built at all. Um, so if they were to build sidewalks, they would be the only, only parcel in the area that has sidewalk. And do you want you to keep in mind that we have some, like, potential development on the opposite side of Gribble Road, on the south side, that are putting in sidewalk, but on this side of the road, there's no sidewalk, um, plans for the future.
The other side is Indian Trail, you said?
So if I zoom out, anything in purple is Stallings, and then this blue is Indian Trail, so it just kind of depends. But most of the south side is, is in Indian Trail.
Okay.
So you can see, it just extends mostly, most of Gribble World is in Indian Trail.
How did we arrive at five cars?
Um, I think that the, it kind of happened, he got five cars because of the other conditional zoning that you're about to hear, the second case. They're adding five parking spaces for five, five vehicles, and I thought five, this is such a small parcel similar in size. I thought five seemed like the most appropriate number for display of vehicles, because it's so similar to the other case. They're just not, the second case just isn't amending their site plan as much as this one is. And also black label, they don't have the conditional zoning, they, they got, um, automobile sales prior to our, um, our ordinance re-rite, but they usually only have five vehicles, usually, um, and they're similar in size.
Now, is this both new and used cars or just used cars?
I believe it's just some used cars, but it could, um, potentially be for new cars, but I don't, I won't.
That's not, that's not part of the condition.
It's not, we're not addressing new or used in the condition.
Okay, okay.
And if Langford wants to, we can, but, um, I didn't address it.
Okay.
Where are the cars, five cars being parked?
Um, so he's gonna have a fence all up front covering the property according to the site plan, so I, I don't think they're really gonna be displayed at all, but until you, you won't be able to see them until you pull into a property. So he'll have maybe five cars on display once you pull into a property, I mean, any excess inventory will be, uh, not labeled.
Do you think that'll look good?
Yeah, that's one thing.
Because then there's a huge fence from the trucking company, and then another fence from.
Currently, they already have a fence up high in the town.
They do? Yeah, that's what I was trying to remember.
I don't have a current, uh, picture of what's there on site right now.
So the fence is already up?
Tomorrow, we need to go take one for council. I'm sorry?
The fence is already up?
Correct.
Okay.
So the only real change is that he's adding automobile sales. Everything in the site plan that you see, he would likely be able to do by right without automobile sales.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? No. Motion?
Uh, propose a motion to approve the site plan, which is.
And find. You want to address the statement of consistency in the same motion?
If you want.
And also address the statement of consistency.
So, um.
Motion to approve.
Yes, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
And to tie it with the, uh, the statement of consistency.
Was it inconsistent but reasonable maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll second the motion that it's, that we approve it and find it inconsistent but reasonable.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Number five. CZ twenty-four point twelve point zero one, three four six nine Gribble Road, requested zoning change from IND to CZ dash one nine, I N D, to allow automobile dealers to use additional, uh, addition to the current automobile repair services major use.
Thank you, so yes, this is CZ twenty-four twelve zero one for three four six nine Gribble Road. Um, funny enough, they applied very similar times, but they're not related at all, they, the owners don't, uh, aren't in business with each other.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware, but they're industrial, doing automobile repair, and they're also requesting automobile sales for conditional zoning. Um, this one is just a little bit more down the street, I'll show you on the Go Maps. Um, so this property is very close to Stallings Road, this property, oh, excuse me, um, the previous property was close to Stallings Road. This property is a little bit more down the street adjacent to Indian Trail, so I'm gonna zoom out so you can see, um, the property. With this conditional zoning, they're not requesting very many amendments to the site plan, they're requesting about five parking spaces up front and a little bit of landscaping in front of the parking spaces, they're not amending the building, buildings on site at all. Um, so with this conditional zoning, it's the same future lanes plan, it's industrial center, um, but vehicle repair and sales are not listed as a category in the future lanes category. So staff proposes that the use is consistent with the surrounding area, and there are already car sales, like I said, on Gribble Road in the Indian Trail side. Um, we have very similar conditions for this property, but I'm gonna go over the site plan real quick again, just so you can see the site, and there's also printed out in front of you, no, um, and an applicant's here as well, um, but essentially, the building's already existing, the parking and the gravel are already existing, and the only changes that I'm proposing are up front. Oops. And this is, this, which is the asphalt of five parking spaces and a five-foot mulch plant texture, and not much else has changed for the property, I think the, the building suits the u, the needs of the, um, the tenant. So I did put a list of conditions, a little bit less conditions than the previous one. So I did put limit display to a maximum of five vehicles at any given time, any additional vehicles stored behind the fence. Um, they would have to stay consistent with the concept plan, so, meaning the, the layout of the site plan, and any modifications would have to come back through the town approval process. Fencing and screening, they have to install and maintain an opaque fence screen, there's already an existing fence screen, so they would likely just have to install opaque screening on the fence. Outdoor storage restrictions, so they couldn't have, uh, just junk vehicles everywhere, they'd have to still comply with our outdoor storage requirements. Um, and then permitting compliance, they would have to get all necessary permits through the state, town, uh, county. Staff does recommend approval of this conditional zoning. Any questions?
No.
Questions?
No.
You did, the applicant was here?
Yep, applicant's here tonight. If you guys want to have any questions for it.
Nope.
Only game, I'd like to hear from him.
I'm not happy to answer any questions, I was really just here for, for reference.
Do you want to have any questions?
Yeah, just was curious of the, the, the origin of your proposal and where.
Sure.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And where it came from.
Uh, good evening, I'm, I'm Pat Pierce with Stallings Property Group, and we, we own the, the property, uh, but we lease it to, um, RDK Autos Auto Repair and Sales. Uh, they're, uh, have been in business for several years, and they were down the street doing the very same activity, but they got grown that space, and so they've come up to, uh, to our building now, and, uh, well, just basically, why, I had to do the same operation, so they moved probably, uh, I don't know, maybe a quarter of a mile from where they were operating before, um, and we're, we're delighted to have them, and, uh, think they would be, uh, they're, they're obviously very familiar with that area already and have been very successful, so we, we think, we think that'll continue. And the way the, the, with Stallings, because they moved from Indian Trail to Stallings, they had to keep their Indian Trail space for the time being to sell cars, and so they're, uh, you know, they're paying for that, whereas they can incorporate that into, into this building and have the same activity without having to pay that extra rent.
Okay.
And so, uh, but we really don't plan to change anything on the building per se, that everything's existing, we just want to be able to have, have use if we can.
So this just makes life a little bit easier, though?
Makes life a little easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve this, um, conditional zoning with the, uh, conditions. Of the, it's five conditions, and that, um, we find it uh, inconsistent, but reasonable because there's already, uh, similar activities, I can't think of the words, but, yeah.
I'll second the motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, number six, um, TX twenty-five point zero two point zero one, attached garages. Staff requests a text amendment in the Stallings Developmental Ordinance within Order Two to clarify regulations for attached garages.
Thank you, so like you said, this is TX twenty-five zero two zero one, this is for attached garage requirements. So current town regulations are extremely vague on how attached garages are attached. Um, we had this come up at the January, recommended by council to bring a text amendment at our January thirteenth meeting due to, uh, public concerns about how attached garages are, um, approved. So staff looked into guidelines that match other municipalities like Matthews, Indian Trail, and we kind of came up with something that also blends with the town of Stallings. So I'm gonna read these, um, I'm gonna skip, uh, most of the, uh, ordinance, but we do recommend approval, obviously, but, because I refer to this, but, um, uh, there's in two point ten, there are ten sections, and I added an eleventh section that's brand new right here, um, if it is approved. So attached garage is not accessed by alleyway, we currently have attached garages regula, regulated on alleyways, but not alleyways. Oh, but, excuse me, let me rephrase that, we have alleyway garages regulated, but we don't have non-alleyway garages regulated, so that's why this says not accessed by alleyways. So, um, A is the big meat of the, um, text amendment, is that an attached garage must be physically connected to the principal structure by either an enclosed passage or a covered breezeway, both with a minimum width of six feet, my wi, my hand wingspan's six feet, so they have to be a minimum six feet attached to the principal structure. Um, the connection to the garage must also have a permanent roof that matches the primary structure in both color and style to the maintaining architectural consistencies. Um, B, the attached garage may only be constructed where our principal structures exist. We currently have had several, uh, permits for structures that don't have principal structures, like the, a house on them, so we wanted to make sure that there's a house on the property prior to them submitting. Attached garages are only permitted in the rear sides as setbacks, and must comply with the setback requirements and not exceed fifty percent of the principal square foot ground floor area, so if your house is, let's say, twelve hundred square feet, the maximum attached garage you can have is six hundred square feet, and then a two-by, a two-car garage is four hundred square feet, just kind of give you some reference.
When, when you say ground floor area, if it's a two-story, let's say, just for round numbers, two thousand square feet, then is the garage limited to one, then that's one thousand being?
If your ground floor area is two thousand square feet, then you only have a thousand square feet that are attached to it. Um, just so that the structures don't get larger than the principal structure, we currently have had some garages built larger than the principal structure, so we wanted to prevent that.
Um, and when you say the, the, at the top, the alleyway portion, what a simpler way to say it, just from my purpose of envisioning it, like residential versus commercial?
Um, I would say there are certain neighbors that have garages attached by alleyway.
Yeah.
So I wanted to kind of make sure that was clear, more clear, but we, if, if you want to make a recommendation, we can kind of come up with better wording and kind of go back to the drawing board and that.
Oh, I wish I had something better, no, I was just.
Yeah, it's just a little bit confusing, um, because we have alleyway rules, but not, I, I was thinking about combining it, and then it didn't mesh well while I was writing it, so I just made a completely new section.
And when, and when you say closed, uh, since, but either in a closed passage, meaning if it's attached and good into the house from the garage, it's considered a closed passage?
Correct.
Okay.
So yes, that probably would likely have to be, for example, um, six foot wide by at least your roof's height, so you can fit in like a normal hallway.
Right.
Um, the, we were trying to avoid people from attaching it with, um, let's say, just a piece of plywood, which has happened in the past. Uh, we wanted to be consistent with the architectural character of the home.
Would this be just when a detached garage is forbidden, that they would attach it with some?
Someone attached, someone detached, the detached garages are already regulated more so heavily than attached. So we want to make that consistent with detached garages, how, how much they're regulated.
This, and this applies to a single-family home versus a townhome?
It would apply to any residential property, but townhomes likely would not be able to fit this because their lots are so much smaller.
Right.
Don't fit the setbacks, and they have more stricter HOA guidelines, so I believe that it would be pretty much impossible with this, how this is written.
Because, because our, in our subdivision, we have detached garages for the townhomes that are having alleyway, yeah, for their access, so.
Okay, yeah, I just think how this is written wouldn't apply to, um, the lot shape of a townhome, because they're built lot, like, all the way to the property.
More deep than they are this way.
Let's say if it was deep, they still would have to meet the setbacks.
Right, okay.
Um, so, let me see where I was, I was on B, so they would have to match the design materials and appearance of the attached garage in the harmony with the principal structure surrounding it as well. Uh, C, this one's just to make sure that it's structurally attached soundly, um, this is more so for Union County, uh, building inspections, but we just wanted to put there that the, it must be structurally secure, um, because there's another layer after they get approval from us, they also have to get Union County to inspect it, we don't, the town Stallings does not inspect it, but I just wanted that language in there to cover the basis, the basis for Union County building.
Is that redundant with, uh, the second sentence in D?
The second sentence? So, the second sentence in D?
Where it says it has to comply with building codes, that would imply it has to have the proper attachments and stuff, I just think, are we saying the same thing twice?
Actually, yeah, technically, yeah, it would be, um, but, uh, the reason C was written is just to provide additional clarity, but I can remove C, and it would still remain the same text amendment. Um, oh, we'll, we'll look at that in a little bit, maybe council may not see C, and D will move up to C.
Okay.
Yeah. And then they also, the, D also says that the minor site development review process would be required, meaning they don't have to go through the entire construction document review, they just have to do the minor site plan review. How our, our ordinance is written is that any structure like this would have to do a major site plan review, meaning concept plan, construction documents, final plat, permits, and we want to avoid so many hurdles for residential properties. That's more so usually for commercial or large developments. But an individual homeowner, I don't believe, needs, it needs to go to that much.
Would, would this be if they're adding one after the principal structure's already built? If it's all built at the same time, that's not.
Correct, it's be just for like, uh, an already built property.
Okay.
Yeah, what other questions do you guys have over this text, on this text amendment?
I don't know, but I'm just gonna say I personally like C, just because it lays it out in plain English.
Yes.
And it covers super. And it covers super, I mean, it, it's more coverage from any misunderstandings for the town of Stallings.
That's what he does.
Some people don't want.
Okay, I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve it as presented.
Second?
Second up?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven.
Statement.
Sorry?
Statement.
That's reasonable.
Well, I move that we find that it's both consistent and reasonable with the, and development ordinance, ordinance. I second it's a land use plan.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, TX twenty-five point zero two point zero two, definite definition of the, staff requests this text amendment installing development ordinance within Article Three to clarify and expand existing language. RDK.
So this is TX twenty-five zero two zero two. We're proposing a definitions update to Article Three of the Stallings Development Ordinance, just to clarify the existing language and to add some new definitions in as well. I did also research surrounding jurisdictions to make sure that the definitions were consistent with the areas around us. Right, and then the first definition is for attached garage, which just kind of plays off of the previous text amendment that Max presented and just provides a solid foundation for that. Um, pass built survey is done after construction is completed and they are required before we do any zoning compliance inspections. We've got two definitions for impervious surfaces. In the development ordinance, these two definitions are repeated, and so I'm proposing to delete the duplicate definition. And also make.
I didn't say the definition.
And then just make a small change to impervious surface coverage, just to correct that sentence structure a little bit. And then neighborhood meeting, that's a public meeting, the first public meeting that is required for conditional zonings and rezonings. And then we also have definition, definition for rezoning, which is just a change from one zoning to another. A couple of definitions for setbacks. Proposing to replace street setback with front setback, just because we don't actually refer to that setback as street setback and it is the setback from the front of the lot. So just make that a little bit more clear. And then for rear setback, just remove the word street from that, so that way it reflects the new definition of front setback. Zero side setback is actually not used at all in our ordinance, so we're proposing to just delete that as a whole since it's not relevant in the ordinance. And then a text amendment is a change in the text rules in the Stallings Development Ordinance. And the staff recommends approval of TX twenty-five zero two zero two to enhance the clarity of the ordinance and provide a solid foundation for future developments. Any questions?
On the setback rear, how do you handle a triangular piece of property?
Those are a little difficult, you kind of just have to go based off of the shape of the triangle. And so maybe if like one side is a little shorter, you can base it off of, the longer side might be partially to the rear. Just, you base it off of like judgment in case of case.
Okay.
But yeah, in that instance, it just kind of falls into the planning director's final judgment.
The, the zero side setback, we were just talking about perhaps redundant clarity with C and D in those previous ones. Is there ever a scenario that you can vision where that would be something that would come up and then we might have to revisit it after eliminating it? I also don't know what it is, so if you could explain that, that would be helpful.
I actually never heard of it before I saw it in our ordinance. And I don't remember seeing it in any of the surrounding jurisdictions ordinances either. I don't believe that we would have a case where we'd use that, because even if a side setback is zero feet like a townhouse, we don't call it that. It's still a side setback, it's just, would be zero as a side setback.
So it seems redundant in that, in that sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Another motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve TX twenty-five dot O two on Article Two. And that we find that it's, um, reasonable and consistent. Then it goes plain.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Twenty-five point four three.
Okay, so I forgot to print out the list, there's like three names, I think, that their terms are running out, Mike, David, and Jackie. And you as well, four names, okay, I'm glad you guys know. So I forgot to print it out for the meeting, so I was going to tell you guys, I'll read some of the email. But just want to remind you so you do not forget to reapply for your positions if you want to stay on the board. I think it's March fifth?
She said seven, sorry.
Seven, yeah. So just, if you can, do this as soon as possible, just to make sure you, you know, stay on board, on board. We'd love to have you on board, and that's, that's all I have to add.
Do we need to, because then that goes to council again for approval?
Yeah.
Do we need to be at that meeting?
I don't think so, since you're already on the board.
What?
I don't, yeah, I don't believe so, but I mean.
We have to read it.
You don't?
Part of the consent agenda for.
Yeah, it would probably be consent, you're right, yeah. They probably won't likely have. They're not going to be, I don't think. I'm like, oh, we're not going to.
I'm not going to rerun so, or to, to reapply, so if any of y'all have a friend or a neighbor who.
I don't have any friends.
Would like to come on. I'm not going to.
For new applicants, is there a deadline?
I'm not aware of the deadline for new applicants, but they would also have to attend, I think, you're running, you're running for getting one? Yeah. You have to attend one of the meetings first and then the council will consider you at their next meeting and you'll fill in one of the date slots.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, because they don't, they don't have any, because you, you're filling somebody's seat.
Correct, yeah, so we have two alternates right now, if you step down, then we have one more full-time seat. You're, if you run again, you run again, or they agree, you'll just, your timing will restart.
We don't know what David's intentions are, but was David's seat up?
Yes, yes.
I just have a question about the conditional rezonings and automobile sales, like does that change? I know you guys put in a ton of work on the small area plans, does that change anything that you did with those?
Not on the small area plan, we don't have a future land use category, it would only affect the, uh, conference of land use plan, the future land use categories. But there's no future land use that has automobile sales, so I doubt the future land use plan is going to change. So, but the small area plan, a lot changed, those don't get updated with conditional or rezonings.
Okay, move, like a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I didn't make the motion.
I thought you said motion.
I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.